I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, joining us in the room we have Patty Lancaster, Justin Lynnholm, Fred Bagley, and Brian Gates, and our wonderful sheriff. Do we have anything to add or delete to the agenda?
I have one addition I'd like to make under general business concerning a phone call I had today with the owner of the Snow Angel. I'd just like to share some information.
Okay.
Excuse me, online isn't working. Online isn't working for anybody.
I'm online.
This is all online here.
So I'll move...
They've not let Carol participate.
I'll move to amend the agenda to add Snow Angel. Do you want to put that at J?
Why isn't Carol being allowed to participate?
Mr. Gates?
I'm asking.
One more outburst and you'll be removed.
You're not letting my wife participate.
She's on.
She's on.
I see her here.
She's on both of those things, and she's on.
You're not, no.
Okay, well...
He cannot hear, she cannot hear anything.
That is not something we can control.
Yeah, it is. You do control, like you did last meeting.
Okay, moving on.
Hey, Brian, if you look up at the screen, she's on twice for some reason. And a minute ago, it says...
She's not actually being allowed to participate. She can't hear anything.
Says she's on a call.
She can't hear anything.
Well, the...
She said she can't hear anything. She's gonna turn herself off and turn herself back on, but she's not being allowed to participate. So you gotta wait, just like we waited for Sarah.
So, Brian, it still says she's on a call.
It doesn't matter.
I know, but I'm telling you, she may need to hang up that part in order to...
She didn't hang up, she's trying again.
No, but it still shows her logged on.
Yes, she's on. She can see you all, but she can't hear you any of this.
Okay.
Because one muted. You know, Sarah Tully likes to mute us.
Nothing's muted, Brian.
That's bullshit.
Brian, I'm having no computer problem. Sarah's having no computer problem. It seems like Carol needs to go off.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, I can hear you now.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, moving forward now.
Oh, wait, so I moved to amend to put it at the end, Megan? Is that where you wanted to put it?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
So we'll make it item J.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving forward to administrative matters.
Do you want a motion?
For signing of the orders.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion for signing of the orders to approve for 62325 for $51,342.91, or 63025 for $171,125,000... Sorry. 63025 for $21,862.11, for 71025 for $12,347.36, and payroll for 62425, the amount of $14,488.52, and also payroll for 7825 for $13,664.43.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Well done, I think you hit every number.
There's a lot of numbers there. There's a lot of numbers there. Okay, and everybody had a chance to look at the minutes for 6925?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for 6925.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and moving on to year-end financials. And I think I'm gonna pass this one off to Sarah or Megan.
Yep. Sarah, you wanna go ahead and take the lead on this?
Yep, so in front of you, you have the draft year-end financials. Jessie and I have done a number of different reviews of our year-end, and we are about 80% confident that we have everything accounted for, but there's still a couple more things that we want to look into. At this time, and again, these numbers are preliminary, we will set the tax rate at the next select board meeting, and tax bills will be going out by the end of the month. It looks to see that we have a deficit rolling into next year's tax rate of approximately $21,000. Based on a $1.4 million budget, that is a reasonable amount to roll forward. It's not attributed to any one thing. I also provided you with the year-end financials with a comparison that shows the difference of what was budgeted versus what was spent or received under revenue. And you can go down through there and take a look that it's just minor figures on each line item that totaled the $21,000. Delinquent taxes are not any higher than they have been in previous years. However, this may change going forward because the legislature adopted new rules which will delay the town being able to go to tax sale until after one year has been surpassed. So, just something to remember as we go forward and see how that's gonna affect our budgets going forward. But at this time, we will be... We have an estimated tax rate, and we've received the education tax rate for homestead at $1.5510 and non-residential at $1.5950. This calculates to an estimated overall tax rate for the homestead at $2.0676 and non-residential at $2.1116.
Can you say that last number one more time? $2.1116?
Sorry, I was coughing. $2.1116, and that is in your packet, Sarah.
Oh, yes, okay. Oh, yeah.
I've apologized, I have a cough. So, you have an opportunity to ask questions between now and the next meeting when we set the tax rate, if you have any questions about the budget summary for the year-end or how things are calculated from the municipal budget for fiscal year '26. This is exactly what was printed in the town report with any articles that were successfully adopted at town meeting, which I believe was just appropriations articles. And then it does roll in that $21,000. But that number is subject to change between now and the 28th. So if you do have any questions, please submit them to Jessie and myself, and we will look into any numbers that you might have questions on.
Very good.
Thank you to you and Jessie.
Yeah, that kind of encompasses both the year-end financials and I just went over the fiscal year '26 tax rate. So we've accomplished both of them if you don't have questions.
Yep. Okay.
Actually, I have one question. Can you remind me what the local agreement tax is?
Sure, the local agreement tax is that the state allows for $10,000 to be removed from assessed values of properties of qualified disabled veterans.
That's right, okay.
And the towns are able to vote up to $40,000, which the town of Mendon has done. So we provide a qualified exemption for disabled veterans at $40,000 off their assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And everybody pays that .001 in order to fund that offset, right?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Our offset, yeah.
Okay, moving forward. Do we have... Moving forward on to announcements. Do we have any announcements? Anybody? No? Okay, that will bring us to public comment. Fred Bagley?
A Woodard Road resident is having trouble with his insurance company because of the fire protection clause in his insurance policy. And it's raised the question on Woodard Road as to the status of the dry hydrant on the pond that the end of Woodard Road Insurance Company... I don't have all the particulars, but is concerned or saying that a dry hydrant, which doesn't have this or that sort of thing, maybe doesn't meet their standards if he's paying increased rates. So we're just hoping the town can resolve the dry hydrant at the Woodard Road Pond. Not just fire risk, but to make everybody's insurance company in Woodard Road happy.
Yes, thank you. We have some pretty good news moving forward on that coming up, so...
Is that on our agenda?
It's not on our agenda today to talk to you, I don't believe, but it is... I'm just known for myself that we are moving forward with those projects.
We met this morning with Chris and discussed that. And tomorrow, wasn't he having his final meeting tomorrow about that, Sarah?
That was a different project. But I have provided Troy Dare with all of the information that they need to finalize the plans for both the Woodard Road dry hydrant as well as the Journey's End dry hydrant. The Woodard Road hydrant is functional and has been tested. The Journey's End dry hydrant is not functional right now.
So can Sarah, can the Woodard Road resident? I have no idea what he needs in order to satisfy his insurance company, but can you come to somebody at the town office to get fully functional or whatever benefit that offers him?
Yeah, if you want to have them contact me, I can look up what the testing... They do a gallons per minute. The fire department does testing annually in September. So we do have the report from last year.
Okay, I'll pass that along, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gates?
I have two things, both on Park Lane. Seems that there's a driveway that's been built right here. The gentleman only owns 113 feet of property. There's a guardrail that goes 130 feet, and then there's an entry to a driveway that's non-permitted. Hasn't had a permit, hasn't had a permit. It's not even on his own land. And then there's a sand pit going on on the left, bottom down, on your property, which is... No, it's dangerous. There's a giant pit there. You also have a can there that you don't have a permit for, and you don't have a permit. You have all those bad equipment there. You run in a sand pit, worry. Ask him? No comment?
No, there's no comment on that. Nope, we're hearing your comments.
It's no comment.
Are we gonna do anything about this driveway that doesn't have a permit? And even, it's not even on his land. It's not in his building permit that he applied for. It said non-applicable, because I had talked to Steve about it, because I tried to build the same building, and he said no. He's building a driveway from his other house around the back. But he didn't. He built a driveway right there, right on your... Right on your property.
Brian, this is a zoning matter, and you have received a letter...
My husband, I see, jumped in. My two minutes is not up. I'm gonna start again.
Don't interrupt him.
You interrupted me. Sorry, Megan, let's start over. So there's a non-permitted driveway on Park Lane. There's a guardrail that goes 135 feet, but the gentleman only owns 113 feet of property on the map. I want to know how he built a driveway on somebody else's property. The only way he could have built a driveway is through the guardrail. He doesn't own the property that the driveway is on. I brought it to the people's home. He said it with the road commissioner. But you've actually... The town has threatened the road commission not to do anything about it when threatened him on an evaluation. So why isn't anything being done on that? And there's a sand pit on the left, down on Access property. They're digging a giant hole. You're removing all the sand. Are you gonna fill that back in? You've got a half-built house with a big open hole. We just talked about this at the planning meeting, how that's dangerous. Do you have a permit to even build down there? No, expired, isn't it? Because we're asking for permits. None of the permits are actually being posted anywhere. They're not online, they're not out here. Why? That's required. Why isn't the town doing anything that's required at all?
Okay, Brian, your two minutes are up. Brian, your two minutes are up.
You're stopping again.
Carol has her hand up.
Steph, Carol has her hand up.
Carol? Carol, go ahead.
Yeah, so I would like to reiterate what my husband said. Steph, you do have some kind of gravel, sand pit going on at your house. It's not permitted. It's on your property. You don't have a permit. There are no permits listed, no applications listed. You didn't pay for anything. I think you're disgusting. And just so you know, I don't know why anyone would want to slow down the speed limit on Route 4 when there is so much blight on Route 4. Don't interrupt me. There is so much blight on Route 4. Coming from Rutland, you can no longer see the Mendon sign. Thank God. So hopefully, they don't realize that they're in Mendon. If you go by Church Hills, I remember the planning commission meeting when everybody was so happy that somebody was gonna do something with Church Hills. And now, if you look at the building, there is a huge dumpster filled with crap. It is so disgusting. I don't know, fairs got in it, there's mattresses. It's everywhere. I don't know why he is not being violated, whoever owns that property. I think you are all incompetent. You have no idea how to run a town. You just approved $284,830.33. For what? We have no idea. So three weeks of payroll costs $75,000 in this town? We have nothing. We have no services. Rollin' Town just used their ARPA funds, Sarah, for a new building for their fire department, police, everything. What do we have? Nothing.
Okay, Carol, your two minutes are up.
Yeah.
No, it is, she only has one minute forty seconds. No, I timed it, one minute forty seconds. Carol, take another two minutes. I'm trying.
I think that you are all disgusting. Steph, I believe that you are incompetent. Steph, I believe that you are disgusting, that you are doing everything illegal in this town. There's no burn permit. What are you doing at the fire wooden? I think that you should all go...
Sarah, could you mute Carol, please? Thank you. Thank you.
That's bullshit. You didn't give her a two minutes. She has two minutes.
I'd like to have him called out of order.
Yeah, out of order.
Uninterrupting two minutes.
Upsetties.
You suck.
Thank you.
You guys are so...
Okay, anybody else on...
You all suck. Yeah, that's it, you all suck.
You have two minutes.
Anybody else on public comment today?
Hey, hold on, you shit. Sarah!
Okay, moving forward now.
All right. Next on the agenda.
On to business. Okay, item A, the Structures Grant Award for the Notch Road Culvert Replacement Project.
So I'll deliver the good news that the town of Mendon successfully obtained the Structures Grant for their culvert replacement on the Notch Road.
Good job.
Chris Baird worked diligently with District 3 in order to obtain this grant, and we're excited to be able to move forward with this project. That will have a timeline. He'll go out to bid this year on it, but it does have the construction season of next year to also accomplish that project. Between... He reported this morning that he's received $157,000 in grants between the culvert and a Better Backroads Grant and the Grants and Aid for fiscal year '26. So that's all really great news to be able to report. I will also just state that we did not receive the Class 2 roadway program grant, which would have paid for the paving for the Notch Road. So that... Chris is working with the highway improvement schedule to push that off until next year, and then he will have to do some minor repairs to the ditch line to sure things up to make sure that that road lasts for another year before we can pave it next year.
So that means that we can do the hard work, right? We can do like the culverts and things like that. But that will just... The surfacing part is all that we wait on, right?
Yeah, and that is slated to be reclaimed and resurfaced. So the grant, the Class 2 roadway grant, if we receive it next year, would pay for approximately $200,000 of that project, and it's estimated at about $3.30.
So the parts of the road that were compromised with the... They became sinkholes. That will be addressed with this first grant?
Yep, so in the rainstorms from last year, or the year before, we put a Band-Aid on it. So we put the culverts back together, and it was a requirement for us to replace it with state-regulated size of the culvert. So that's what he's pursued and what he's accomplished. So we'll be moving forward with the RFP for that project.
Great. Thanks.
Awesome, yeah, that's great. It's good news. Like to hear good news.
Yep.
Okay, and item B, VT alerts adoption and designation of authorized posting personnel.
So this is also a request of Chris's. He would like to utilize the State Alert program that sends out text messages to Rutland County residents. It's statewide, but we would specifically receive those in Rutland County where he can post when there's going to be road closures on there. In order for the town to participate, though, in VT culverts, we need the select board to adopt that you're gonna utilize VT culverts. And then there's a form provided in the orders that would designate who's allowed to post on VT culverts. And I've outlined Chris Baird as the road commissioner, Limi Carter as the emergency management director, Jessie Bridge as our town clerk, and myself as the town administrator. So in emergencies, we'd be able to post that there's a flooding event or some sort of emergency event, as well as road information. This tool is not to be confused with our text gov that we are also implementing. That is just a Mendon thing. So it's not statewide. Those text messages would go out to just the property owners in Mendon that either sign up for it or that are automatically signed up for it if they're residents of Mendon.
Do you need a motion on this?
We do.
So I would move that the select board authorize the VT alert use by the people that you've named, Chris Baird, Limi Carter, Jessie Bridge, and Sarah Tully?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. Item C, letters soliciting support from Route 4 property owners for the speed reduction on Route 4. We have Fred Bagley to speak on that. Fred, you ready?
As you know, the E-Trans has received our application along with Rutland Towns for a speed reduction. They're supposed to be doing a speed study sometime this summer. Nobody's seen that, those people's out there yet, but we're trusting that they will go ahead. The data is processed by the E-Trans engineers, and they come to their in-house recommendation, and then that recommendation goes to a three-person committee officially designated to decide whether a particular zone can have its speed freeze or lower. That consists of the Secretary of the agency of transportation, the Commissioner of Motor Vehicles, and the Commissioner of Public Safety. And they need sometime in October, I don't have that date. But we're thinking, those of us working on the speed reductions are thinking that if we get every business and every residential property owner from Midway to town, I vote to sign a petition, as well as potentially sending, if they're willing, letters of support that might have... It's a public meeting of this traffic committee, so I can appear, we can appear to make our case. I'm guessing, I don't think we have any firm basis for this, but we're guessing chances of getting it are less than 50/50 of getting a speed reduction. But if we maybe make a strong case that the property owners and town is really, really want it, maybe, but that committee will decide. So we've formatted, Patty and I have formatted two separate letters. They are largely the same. I sound a little...
Yeah, I looked at those.
These are the ones that, yeah, we have seen.
They're largely identical text. This customized a little bit, so one letter refers to the other letter, et cetera, et cetera. And we have, Jessie has provided us, with your permission, melee labels for every property owner who fronts on Route 4 from between those two roads. And then Patty and I will go through it, make sure the business owners get business one and vice versa. And then we would... Patty's in the process of formatting a petition, which we hope we leave at the town office desk, and urging people to come in over the course of the summer, excited. And for some important businesses like Casella and other big-name companies, we would personally collect their signatures to make sure that the positive business is represented on the petition and all in some effort to get this date to buy or earn it. So it's gonna be a while before we're ready to set it up, but we wanted to share this with you, see if you agree with the text. It's a single piece of paper, double-sided, addresses with a sample of the petition that Patty's drawn, a sample of the text of the petition that Patty's drawn up. And so it'll be a while before we put them through the meter, but we're just looking, Freddie, if we don't need to know tonight what suggestions you may have on the text. And then the other input is whose signature, whose names should go in the box? Should it be the anonymous Route 4 Traffic Safety Implementation Committee? Should it be the select board? Should it be your individual names? I don't have a strong opinion on that one. I don't have Patty's. As to who? What names are most likely to generate the most signatures on the petition?
Right.
Megan or Sarah, do you have opinions?
Well, I think, I mean, what's your subcommittee called, Fred?
Route 4 Safety Implementation Committee. The town of Mendon Route 4 Safety Implementation Committee? That's what it says at the bottom of the letter.
Kind of made an agreement when the town, the select board, accepted the study group's recommendation. then we went to the next level. What do we do next? And I think this is the name that we came up with. It's not formally a town committee per se, except you guys gave us some responsibility of pursuing solutions.
So what do you guys think about having it being from us, Seth and Sarah? It's fine?
I'm fine. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that. If it helps impact a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a good one.
Yeah. I wonder about the petition. So you only want businesses? Or is there going to be a business and a... Oh, there's going to be one for each. Okay, okay, got it. Okay?
Yeah, because we thought humbly, maybe naively, that a group of commissioners sitting around would be have petition if they saw business, 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 every business owner in that section of the highway signs, and then a separate one for obviously less well-known residential property owners that that would have an impact.
Yeah, makes sense. I'm good with it. I agree with it.
I think we can have it be from the Select Board.
Sure.
Okay.
So I'll change that. Do you want, do you want three names or just say the Mendon Select Board?
I just think the Select Board is fine.
Yeah.
Yep.
And so I will change that. Please be generous in critiquing the text.
Okay.
You know, if, what are the wordsmithing we need to get in? As long as it'll fit on the front page.
Do you, shall we, I was thinking maybe a motion to authorize, you know, one of us to be the final sign-off on the text of the letter? That way, we don't necessarily have to have them come back and do any wordsmithing. You can keep circulating it, but then we will have formally, like, approved of the sending of the letter. What do you guys think?
I'd be happy to be that person.
Okay.
And then Patty and I could take our responsibility to, if it comes down to it in the last week, we'll go knock on doors to get, like, every, so we can tell the assembled commissioners that everybody signed it, please take it seriously.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And remind me, Rutland Town is doing the same thing, right?
Rutland Town's going to facilitate its petition.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to let Fred know that I did put his letter on Town Letterhead, and I did add the Select Board to the bottom of it. So I will forward an email with that information.
Okay. But we won't ask to have it printed until it's bounced around a little bit, they've got a chance to redo it.
Yeah.
And we will let you know when we think we have a final product. I guess it's two weeks away.
And that would be Megan, basically.
Yeah, so.
Sure, well.
Yeah, so if you want, I'll move that we approve the letter to, a letter to Route Four business owners and Route Four homeowners addressing the matter of the lowering of the speed limit before the Vermont Traffic Committee in that we authorize Megan to be the final sign-off on the content of the letter for the Select Board.
Okay, yeah, I'll second that.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we're going into this with either way open.
Yeah.
Who knows, but we've got one shot.
Hey, efforts forth, right?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you, guys. Moving on to D, Mendon Historical Society request for planting, for tree planting and plaque for the 250-year celebration. I heard a little bit about this, but not...
Yes, so we have kind of informal permission to go ahead with the project. This is what we kind of think the tree planting project would look like.
Oh, I remember this.
It's an effort to conceal part of that kind of eroded road bed behind the kiosk and behind the marble bench, and allow both structures to stand out in all seasons. Historical Society has the money to do it. It has already put a down payment with Prado's to hold the trees for a fall installation, which is their recommended time. We just, it's either be five or six, depending on whether they can actually get in the ground here or get in the ground over there. Because who knows what they're going to find?
Mm-hmm.
A lot of boulders, I'm sure.
There was a building there.
Yeah, and I'm sure we'll find some old bricks and stuff along the way. But we would just, Historical Society would like formal permission to go ahead and plant those trees this fall, so we can have them ready by next spring. And then, a slight segue, Historical Society would also like to know on a potential plaque installation honoring Mendon's veterans over the last 250 years. If there's one person on the Select Board that we should liaise on with to start working out text and size and order, because we kind of like to honor the plaque this fall, thinking it gets in, that our target date is July 4th, 26.
I think since I'm, since I am the one not working, that I should be that as well.
Okay.
Perfect.
So, do you, is there any reason why they shouldn't start planting from Megan and Sarah? Or do you have any?
I have no problem with that.
No, I think the planting in the fall, it's a perfect time to get it done. So I totally agree with them doing that.
And yeah, fall's the best time to plant every tree, but then if one dies, they can replace it in the spring of August, July 3rd.
Right, right. Now, everything is, so for costs and whatnot, you guys have everything covered for the soils, if they have to put soils in and whatever, okay? Yeah, absolutely.
So I'll move to authorize the planting of the trees around the, around the structure out in front of the town office, and that we authorize Megan to work with the Historical Society on the text of the plaque.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you again.
And thank you, Pat, Jack, I'm sorry, Jack, Patty and Fred, for your work on the Route Four speed limit and all that goes with it. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to E, Town Attorney.
Do you, you want me to take this one?
Yeah.
Peter? So the Planning Commission in our work, working on the zoning rewrite, has come upon at least one, potentially more than one, question that the Rutland Regional Planning Commission had, when we asked for their advice, they said, "Ask your own attorney." And so we would like permission and authorization from the Select Board to reach out to and retain an attorney for the purposes of working on the zoning rewrite. And in addition to that, not long before this came up in the zoning conversation, as Sarah and Jesse and I were prepping for the trainings on open meeting law and public records, there was acknowledgement that we don't actually have a person kind of designated to the town who does municipal law that would dependively pick up the phone if Jesse needed to call on an election matter or there's a public records request that requires, it's a little bit more complicated and may need someone to weigh in. And so what I'm proposing is that the Select Board authorize Sarah, and I'd be happy to work with Sarah, to draft a letter to go to four or five attorneys or law offices, both in and outside of Rutland, and invite them to send us their, a letter of interest that says that they'd be interested in being the Town of Mendon's attorney, and to let us know what their rates are. So at that point, I think maybe we could come back, unless you want part of this motion to be, send a letter and then have, you know, one of us work with Sarah to select somebody, but we can go, we can go either way. At the very least, I think we should get the ball rolling so we can at least find someone who has some background in zoning. Ideally, the firm would all, the firm or the person would have, you know, municipal law experience and could be all things for the Town of Mendon. So that's what I'm proposing, and if you guys have thoughts, in chat?
I think we should move, I'll make a motion that we, Sarah, reach out to four or five law firms to see if we can get interest in someone that we can retain as our town attorney. And I would like Sarah Buckson to work with Sarah Tully on that project.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. I see we have a hand raised. Are we taking comments now?
No.
We're moving forward, correct?
Right.
Do we don't have any comment about everything that you were just talking about, discussing the town attorney and everything else, hiring people?
No, we're done with it.
Public comment is over, Carol. That's good.
We should let Fred Bagley go on for five minutes. He gets to talk about whatever he wants, because he's not an elected official.
Every section of the, every section of the...
I'd like to call Carol and Brian out of order.
I'm a member of the public. I, I'm like you, Sarah Buckson. I actually reside and pay taxes in this town.
Please mute Carol.
Brian and Carol, you're out of order here, okay? So we're moving on to item F. Payment policy review and adoption.
So included in the folder is a payment policy that is recommended for, by Jesse as our treasurer for the Select Board to adopt. Essentially, it outlines how we handle payments coming into the office and specifically limits the amount of cash that someone can bring into the office. This is for safety reasons, and she did confer with VLCT on a sample policy. And so you'll notice that it caps the amount of cash that we receive to $200. Otherwise, she would direct them down to get a bank check, a certified bank check, if they had cash.
Okay, yeah. Yep.
Sounds good to me. Do you want a motion?
Yeah, do we need a motion for that, sir?
Yeah, a motion to adopt the policy.
Adopt it, okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt policy for, or for payments policy and limit cash delivered here to the office at $200.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, COTS annual contract, item G.
So this is, I'm relaying this information from Jesse as well. COTS annual contract. COTS is the system that we utilize, the software for recording information. So it's the recording of the land records. We've used this company for a number of years since we digitalized land records, and their proposed three-year contract has a rate increase of 35%, which most towns are pushing back on. So she wanted you to be aware of it and also support a letter going back to COTS as a town stating that we would accept a reasonable increase, but yet 35% is unreasonable.
I would support that. I would really support that letter.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Okay.
And I'll just say, the COTS, it's two Ts, I think, Sarah, on it, just so you're aware. TS, yeah. We're seeing, like, because I use those land records, different, the different systems. There's one called, I think, Record Hub. There are a few others. That, that's outrageous, and they can pass those fees along to the searchers. They don't, they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be sending, you know, they shouldn't be spending, asking the town to put that bill. I guess just another comment would be, I think we should tell our state representative that the state should begin to put the bill for records digitization for all municipalities going forward, because it serves, you know, as many people outside of our town as it serves in our town. So that's just a comment.
Yeah, makes sense. So we've already moved, I would say, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Letter E, 911 street naming. And this is referring to a little road off of Heather Lane, and which is unnamed at the moment.
Correct. So this is a town right-of-way that goes to a federal forest, but it does have five different lots on it, and they're just starting to be built out now. So we had a primitive camp on one of them, but they have, some of the lots have sold, and people are looking to build different various units on them. So once there's three structures on the road, it needs to be named as a road. So Jesse, as the 911 coordinator, went to the property owners of the road and requested names to be submitted, possible names, and it was decided that Cascade Lane is the desired name for the road. She has done a double-check to make sure that Cascade Lane is not a duplicate name of a road between Killington, Rutland Town, and Rutland City, in which we would share zip codes with, so.
Yeah, the closest one is in Danby.
Okay.
So do we, we name the road, are we also responsible for maintaining it already?
No, it is a right-of-way, but it's classified as a trail.
I see, okay.
So we do not need to maintain it. We typically do do erosion control measures on legal trails. So we would install water bars or culverts if the road was threatened to be washed out, but we don't maintain it to any standard of Class 1, 2, 3, or 4.
Okay.
Okay, so does that mean no street sign as well, Sarah?
Well, there'll be a street sign. Yeah, no, for 911 purposes, there'll be a street sign.
Okay.
But they would do the winter, the property owners would do the winter plowing, similar to Falls Road.
Okay, yep.
So I'll make a motion that we name the road Cascade Lane.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Aye, evaluations.
So I'll take this. I had Matt this morning. I passed around a new evaluation form that we received from VLCT. Much different approach to evaluations, and we all agreed that it's much better. So I am, I, because all that is going on, especially on the road crew, I am going to do the reviews of Sarah, Jesse, and Chris in probably late August, early September. in probably late August, early September, and then the Jesse at that point will then do her review and Chris will do his two reviews. And we're gonna, our goal will be to get them all done by the end of September.
Okay.
So that's just FYI. And the other thing that I added to this, the next thing I added was the gentleman from Snow Angel. So I contacted him today and I said, you know, we're just, we'd love to have an update. And he informed me that he had an engineer that was supposed to come in the spring and start looking at property and working on plans, but the guy, you know, kind of got behind, so this call has spurred him to reach out to the gentleman again. And I just said, be sure that whoever they're using speaks to Greg before they get too far into this because there's a lot of things around that property for zoning. And he agreed and he, I gave him Greg's contact information and I asked him if he would have it mowed. And he said he would absolutely have it mowed now because I told him it looks, you know, he lives down in Wallingford. I just said it looks awful. So he agreed to have it mowed. So he's hoping, you know, today he asked the engineer again to come meet with him and come lock the property. So hopefully at least, I mean, it's at least encouraging that he's planning on doing something with it. He said they're either going to tear it down completely and rebuild on the footprint or they're going to try to renovate the property as it is now.
That's awesome.
They understand they'd have to rebuild on that footprint.
Any ideas of what they're putting there?
I, no. He just said, I wouldn't be surprised if it ended up being housing.
Yeah, if it's needed.
Yeah, and he's, you know, and he asked me why, you know, the owner of the Tyrol hadn't turned that into housing before it, you know, and I said, I didn't know he was somebody from out of state who just wants to sell it now. You know, when I called him, he told me he wants 1.5 million for that property.
Which one?
Tyrol.
Okay.
So anyway, this, this gentleman was talking about how badly housing is needed, you know, for people that work at Killington. And so I think that's probably what he's going to look to do.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to let you guys know that I, you know, I said, I'm not going to bug you. It's not my role to do that, but I, you know, if you have any questions, you need to direct them to the zoning administrator.
Great. Thanks for the heads up on that. Okay, I believe that leads us to adjourning our meeting tonight. I will make a motion to adjourn our select board meeting for this evening.
That's set.
I'll say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.